Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:31. Today is Thursday, July 24th, and I'm going to call the special city council meeting to order. Will the city secretary please call roll?
Heiser.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Zuniga.
Present.
Harris.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Tobias.
I'm here.
All right, we have six members present. We have a quorum. Up next is citizen comments. Is there anyone who wishes to come up to speak? Seeing none, we're going to close citizen comments. It is now closed. The city council will now go into executive session. What? Oh, okay. All right, so, all right, so, oh, yes. Would everyone please stand for their pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have staff reports and presentations. Item one, receive a report, hold a discussion, and provide staff direction regarding potential items to include for charter amendments to be included in a special election on November 4th, 2025. Ms. Alcorn-Reed.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Council. Amy Alcorn-Reed is the attorney for the record. I need to see if the presentation will come up. So, our Charter Review Commission has done some really good work over the last six months, and they've put together quite a few recommendations. When I tried to break them into propositions, I got Proposition A through Z, so that is 26. That might be a little hefty, so we may be looking at it to see which ones we want to do this time, which ones we might want to do next time, or we may want to do all of them. It's up to the council. I'm going to go through them, kind of one by one, and give you a chance to ask questions, make comments. At the end of the evening, what I would like is to have an idea of which ones are moving forward so that we can get this on the agenda for August 5th. So, Proposition A would be city council term limits. The recommendation from the Charter Review Commission is to limit all city council members to three, three-year terms, three consecutive, three-year terms, as a council member or as mayor, or in any combination thereof. Currently, you can do three years on council and then three years as the mayor. Charter Review Commission is recommending changing that. So, there are some considerations that I kind of put together. We highlighted this to discuss the potential that it doesn't, well, the fact that it doesn't specifically forbid someone from serving their three terms as mayor and then running for council again. And so, the question that I asked originally was whether we wanted to change that. The commission recommended this further limitation. I would say there's, there are some, some good, some good, some pros for it that the commission discussed were the idea of regularly allowing new ideas and new people to serve so that the council could get additional input. And the one potential downside is that it may discourage someone from running, from serving on council before running for mayor so that they could get three full terms as mayor. And there is arguably some benefits having served on council before being mayor. Any questions on that one? Okay. Proposition B would be vacancies in a council position for less than one year. So, the idea, the current charter requires that if there's a vacancy in any position, the city must hold an election within 120 days to fill that vacancy. That is based on state law. However, the state law provides that a city can, in their charter, provide for a different method to fill a vacancy if there is 12 months or less remaining on that person's term. And so, the Charter Review Commission has recommended that rather than having that election within 120 days, that it be on the next uniform election date. And a lot of the reason for that is if you, if your term expires in November and you decide you want to resign in May, the city now has to hold an election within 120 days after May, which is about August, and then we have to hold the election for the same seat again in November. And so, to avoid that, the Charter Review Commission's suggestion is to hold that election on the next uniform election date, even if they resign in May, so that would be November.
Amy, just to interrupt for just a moment, are you wanting to go through all of these different propositions and ask the council at the very end, or would you like feedback for each individual one as you go through it? What do you think is the best way to handle that?
I think feedback as we go is probably easier than jumping around.
There's quite a few of these, council members, so I, I'm thinking maybe that would be the best, too. If you have specific concerns or things that you want to see, letting us know each of these as we go through them might be helpful.
Well, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember McKinney.
So, in that event, somebody were to resign in May, that seat would just sit vacant until the next November, correct?
They would continue to hold over under the Texas Constitution. However, if they, you know, moved out of town, then it would be, or just didn't want to appear anymore, it would just be a vacant seat until the next election.
The answer to my follow-up question is like, would it be up to them?
Right.
Thank you.
So, that brings up another question. On that end, somebody resigns in May, and let's say by June or by July, they said, okay, I'm officially want to be done, so there's no holdover. Let's say, then what happens to that seat? It stays open. Is there a conflict with the city whenever it needs specific votes, such as budget or anything like that? How would you?
It does make those trickier.
Yeah, how do you, how would you get somebody in the seat? I know in the past, there was the talk of making an appointment, which grew controversy as well, because we're nominating certain people that we all know or could know. So, how would that work out in that sense to where the holdover where the person says, I resign, but I'm no longer wanting to attend meetings anymore, that person's gone? How do we go from there?
So, appointment is one of the options that I have listed on here as other options. That is what the city of Buta does if the, if the vacancy is for less than a year. And so, it is, it is an option. The Charter Review Commission did not like that. They wanted to have the, the election. So, what you're going to end up with if somebody stops coming after their resign, or say they move out of town, and so they're just not able to come anymore, is we will have some logistical difficulties with tax rate, which requires a supermajority of the entire council.
Yes, exactly.
Or any kind of one-reading ordinance, because we're limited on which ordinances we can do by one reading, so we have to have seven council members most of the time.
Yeah, because I'm looking at not only just the resignation, but just looking at, again, if somebody has to move out of town. What if a council member becomes very ill?
Right.
And they are no longer to be compatible to serve in that term. So, I'm looking at it not just somebody just resigning it quick because of whatever the issue may be, or personal issues, but if it has to do with their health or other issues of employment, what would be the next step, the much easier step to do, to follow in line?
Yeah, I would argue that the easiest way to get it filled quickly would be to give council the option to appoint a council member.
Okay.
That said, like, that's what I recommended to the Charter Review Commission. They were not in favor of it, so their recommendation was to, to just keep the seat vacant and deal with the logistical issues with that.
Okay, that was good.
Councilmember Harris.
So, can we, since there would be issues requiring a majority or supermajority vote of the council, can we declare that seat to be vacant and then the, the majority is less one?
No, the majority will remain the full council regardless.
So, we can't do that?
No.
Have, and have you heard, given what the Charter Review Commission is recommending, is there, are there any flaws in that suggestion that were, that haven't been brought up yet or that you can think of that we should be aware of?
Councilmember Tobias hit on exactly the point that would be the most concerning to me, which is having a vacancy through the budget, especially through the budget time when there are a lot of votes happening and several of them require a major, a supermajority in some instances.
Well, what did the Charter Review Commission say when that was brought up to them, or if that was brought up to them?
They, they were pretty comfortable with the idea of a vacancy, even if it made votes a little bit more difficult on our end. And so, the city of Buta decided to appoint in that situation, and I think that would be a reasonable option if that's what the council wants to do.
And just to reiterate, we don't have to give direction tonight, correct? We just?
I would like to get an idea of how council wants to move forward on all of these, because we're trying to put it for vote on August 5th, and I have to draft all of these propositions before then.
So, we're looking for direction on the items that you would like to take action on, or potentially take action on, on, on the 5th. You can certainly have a special meeting, too, if you need more. There's a lot here, and we recognize there's a lot of complexity here. So, if you need more time, we could have another special meeting and come back and talk to you. I think there is, I don't recall the deadline, Amy, but it's mid-August is the deadline for calling that election. But that's what we're trying to do, is get some direction of which of these are you interested in doing? Maybe there's some that you want more information on before you can take action.
Do you want motions or just verbal?
Amy, Amy, how much time do you need before August 5th to put everything together on your end?
I can do it relatively quickly. The primary issue I have is there's not a lot of time before August 5th, so we've already published for the Saturday meeting. So, if we're going to put in a special meeting, we'd have to do that early next week.
Yeah, because it, because that's next week, that's next Friday.
Right.
So, I think we really need to get on this, look on this one. I'm a little worried about appointing someone. The optics of it, maybe somebody thinking that we're trying to give somebody that seat, right? Like councils, I don't know, maybe they, I think where the commission probably had an issue with this is that you appoint someone and they're, they're thinking that they're a guaranteed seat for the next election, but I, I really don't think that's the case. I, I don't know, I'm just kind of, but you know, I've served on a six-person council before, and we were able to do quite a bit. It didn't really slow us down, so I don't know, I'm kind of okay with this one.
Robert, Michael, can, did, when that was, I know that you guys were both here with the six-person council, was, were there any, I can't remember if that was during budget season or anything along those lines where, because like, that's the main, that's really the only concern. And Robert, I completely agree with the anticipation of some pushback from the public or the commission saying there could, you know, cry foul play on appointments. But just on the other end of the spectrum, it's like if, if there's any reason to think that budgets might not pass or take longer to pass, or like defeasance votes, or things, votes to get something on a ballot, you know, might be slowed down that maybe we need, maybe this would be one to get more information on?
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad we're having this conversation about this, because we, we have to have these, these talking points, because this affects, you know, years down the road. Number one, during that time, yes, it was around July, I believe, and so we did have a six-person vote for the budget. But what I noticed that with, with Mr. Langley and his group is that we're not, we're not finalizing a budget at the end of August like we did before. We're taking our time all the way through September, which gives us a couple more weeks to be able to discuss things. We're not in a rush to get things done by September 1st. I know, I noticed that. So, that helps there. I, I, the only, again, the only reason why I have brought those questions, because in the event of somebody having to resign for health reasons or for job displacement, or whatever that case is, how would we, how would we fill that void? If it's to where the commission recommends a six-person till we have an election, I respect their choice, but I understand the, the controversy and the conflicts that they have with that, because we, it, it's, it's a no-win situation, because if I appoint somebody or we bring somebody up for that we think that might do a good job, somebody's going to dissect and their, their history, their personnel history, and it could, it could just lead to just a little bit of, of drama in that sense. We want to prevent that, obviously. But I think if this is what the commission is wanting to propose, then, and if it means that we have a six-person, like what Robert's saying, we can get through it. We just need to make sure we take our time on our votes and get all the information, and we can go through. Now, I understand that when there's a supermajority, of it's got to be a 5-2 vote, you know, you've got, or 5-1, or 4-1, I mean, however we look at it, again, if, if somebody is out as well, we have to look at that. If somebody's not able to attend the meeting where we only have five people on the dais, we have to look at all of that, but I think, I think we could be okay. Mr. Heiser, I think we should be okay on this.
Okay. Councilmember Presunaga, do you have any thoughts on this one?
So, do we just make a motion on this one? Or?
We're just looking from the council, from the consensus. Is the consensus of the council, and maybe that's the question, is the consensus on the vacancy consideration that you go ahead and proceed with what was recommended by the committee?
Yeah, I'm okay with the recommendation of the charter.
Then we can bring that forward on the 5th.
I, I, I go with the committee's recommendation, that's fine.
Okay. Do we need to go back to the one, Proposition A? Do we want to go ahead and go back and discuss that?
Did anybody want to discuss the term limits?
No.
You're good with the consensus is to move forward with the charter's, committee's recommendation?
Is the consensus to move forward or to not move forward?
Prop B.
Prop A.
Prop A. Let's go back to that, make sure we're asking you the right question.
I mean, I don't love it. I think that, that it's discouraging somebody of, of, someone who could come in with experience to serve.
There are also compromise options at my previous city. We had, you know, you could serve, I think it was six terms, but they had two-year terms, so they're a little shorter, in any combination of mayor or council, but you could only do four of each. So, it was, if you did four on council, you could still do two as mayor, so it's kind of, it's kind of a hybrid, so you get a little bit of extra time, but not a full three, if that's something you want to consider. You could do maybe, yeah, four or five terms.
You know, Amy, you brought up somebody running, being on council, running for mayor, and then coming back to council. I, I, I kind of like not being able to do that. I think once you've been a council member, you've gone to mayor, going back to council, I think, I don't know, it just, it, it just feels like you've already given a lot to your city and to come back and serve in the council. I don't know, but there are circumstances. I mean, you just, you just never know what's going to happen in the world. I know we're a larger city now, but I think about, you know, we had an all-women's, you know, council, because we didn't have enough people, and, you know, all the men were all fighting, you just never know what the future holds, so I'm kind of, I know we're a larger city now, more people to pull from, but I think if I had any consideration, it'd probably be that you wouldn't be able to come back after being a mayor.
So, you would still have three terms as each, but make it very clear that you couldn't serve for mayor and then run for council after.
Correct.
Michael, how many terms have you served? Like, you're termed out after this upcoming year, right?
I'm termed out after '27, yes. So, I won, I, I won a special election in 2020, and, but, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Kirkland, you have to serve a full year before, if you serve a full year and then your original official election date was the following year of, of '21, if you've served more than 12 months, that would be considered a full term if you have a special election.
Yeah, it's actually the last sentence on this slide. A person elected to fill an unexpired term of one year or less will remain eligible to serve three terms. So, if your unexpired term was more than a year.
Yeah.
Then you are not eligible.
I would be, I would be termed out in, in '27.
So, under this, the, the suggestion, anyone who terms out after three consecutive terms on council would have to sit out a year and then?
Then they could run for mayor or they could run for council again.
Yeah.
But the key is, you have to be elected, so. It's not guaranteed I'm just going to be on there. And, and so, but, but I understand a, a different concept on this, is that, you know, five years ago, my mentality of council was a little bit different than I am now. So, who's to say in three years I may have the same mentality on that end? So, I think by doing this, it may be a way that the committee is saying that it's, it's not just saying that the person wasn't doing a good job, it's saying that it's getting, you, you want to be able to allow newer ideas, because our, you know, you have to respect the hustle, but you have to respect the change. And our, and our city's changing, and you need to have new ideas. You need to have that change in, in any business, any job, any position, and any, in, of course, with politics, the way that the, the, the world goes, world goes in a sense. So, I can understand from my point of view that, you know, having term limits gives other people the opportunity to say, oh, it's not going to be the same person running again. It gives that person an idea to where, hey, we can be able to come up with newer ideas on, on that end. But I don't know how the rest of y'all feel. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of okay with this in the way.
We've already got term limits, so that's one thing to think about. This isn't adding term limits, this is reducing the term limits that are already set. So, that's what, so they're already term limits, so now it's trying to see how we set the term limits. The only concern I have is, you know, it's great to have great new ideas, but it's also great to have experience, and I kind of feel like this might take that away a little bit. And anytime you have less experience on the dais, it's the, like I said, it's, it's the developers that win on stuff like that, you know? It's, it's not, it's not the best option for the residents, not having the experience on, on the council. And that's the only concern I have here, but I'd be good with reducing from someone serving as mayor and not coming back to council. And if, if there was a concession, is there something somebody wanted to do, take out, after serving three terms on council, maybe just two terms as mayor, not three?
Like, I, like, I'm not going to die on this hill, on this one, but the one point that I, and I remember thinking this when I first saw this a while back, was like, we're basically taking away the decision from the voters who continue to elect somebody in this instance. If someone is elected three times in a row, we're now taking away that opportunity for, for the voters, if they're happy with that person, to elect that person a fourth time in a row, whether or not they are running for council or mayor, is that, you know, to me, that feels like the only thing that I would maybe, if I were to die on the hill, that would be why, is we're, we're basically saying, like, if you like somebody and somebody continues to get elected, you know, there is an expiration date to that person.
Yeah. We do, we do have an expiration date, so there's already term limits, you know, I, I think about, you know, having someone that served three terms on council, having good experience, deciding to run for a term as mayor, it would, it would benefit, you know, the, the city, so I, I don't know, I'm just, I, I think there's already term limits, I think I'm good with moving it forward with not doing anything on this. The only thing I, I would really like to express is not coming back to council after being mayor. That's something I would really like to see, because I think once you've been on council, you've been mayor, there's no reason of going back. It, it is time to let somebody else come in on the council level, because that's where they're going to grow and become mayor one day. So, I, I'd, I'd really discourage someone being mayor, coming back to council, because I, I think it's time for the next person to grow as councillor and get the opportunity to run for mayor.
Councilmember Harris.
I agree that I, I'd like to have the voters have the option, you know? If they feel like somebody having served nine years and then runs for mayor, if they feel that that person should not be elected mayor because of the time they've served, then they, they will not elect them. I don't have any problem with the mayor serving on council three years and then serving as mayor for three. It's a long time. A lot of people, very few people are going to want to do that, many years devoted to the city council. But at least, you know, every term, the, the citizens have an option to elect a different person, and we don't lose the, somebody that is potentially a really great mayor, because they've served three years on council.
I mean, we could just look at Mayor Mitchell serving, what, I think he served a full year and then ran two terms for mayor, so under this new rule, he would have not been able to run for reelection in 2023, which is actually the first, the only election, I believe, that he won without going to a runoff against four, three other candidates. So, I think, like, if there is an example to hold up as to, you know, the voters making the decision, like, that probably would, would be it. I'm fine with the not coming back to council, I'm cool with that.
Yeah.
Just the, the other one, I just don't love.
I also don't like the idea of, of discouraging people from serving on council before they run for mayor.
Correct.
I, I can tell you, you know, you guys know I've, I've paid attention for a long time. I showed up to meetings for a long time before I, I sat on this chair. And the, the learning curve for me, even in the six months, has been dramatic. I can only imagine how much steeper it is for, for a mayor who's never sat in a seat before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm good with not moving forward with this one, if we want to just leave it as is.
I feel like that's the consensus I'm hearing, so I'm going to move on unless somebody objects.
Michael, you good?
Yeah, just.
And I think Councilmember Harris brought up a great point. You know, at the end of the day, the voters do decide.
Right. No, I, I also want to echo that the voters do decide in every election cycle, right? Whether you have the term limits or not to remove someone or keep someone in the seat. There is a big learning curve. You know, you really get better at the council after you've served really the three years. So, there is that experience factor, and, but I do agree with you also, Mr. Rizzo, that it sort of feels backwards to be a mayor and then come back to council. I think I would support not, or prohibiting that, because it is, that's not really what we want. We, we want to move people forward, you know, with our city forward as, as they, as they learn the leadership role.
But I'm, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so, but I also support the, the commission's term limit recommendation, but if the majority does not view that, you know, I could, I could still support what, what the council has in mind, but some focus on not serving as mayor and then coming back to council. Can we word that in there somehow?
We, we could develop a proposition that says that. What I will say on that point is, I brought it up because one of the things I was trying to do with the Charter Review Commission was poke as many holes as I could possibly find to try to avoid litigation. And I think the plain reading of that charter provision is that, no, you cannot run for mayor, you cannot be elected for three terms as mayor, and then immediately go back to, to council, because if you look at the, the language, it provides, it says, provided that a person may serve up to three consecutive terms in the office as council member and thereafter be elected to serve three consecutive terms in the office of mayor. What I brought up was that it doesn't specifically then prohibit you from being mayor and running for council. And so, we could add a language that specifically prohibit that if that's what council wishes to do, but I'm not entirely certain that it's necessary. It was just a little hole that I saw somebody might try to question and try to wiggle through.
It's never happened before, to my knowledge, in the history of the city, so.
Yeah, I don't want to die on the hill either.
I'm, I'm fine leaving it as is, as well.
Yep. Yep, I'm good with that.
Okay.
All right. Proposition C is to do with attendance at city council meetings. This references both sections 3.06 and 3.09, and the intent was to add some clarity as to when missing three council meetings would qualify as misconduct by a council member, because currently the charter says if you're absent from three consecutive council meetings, that's considered misconduct. And we were talking about how when we did the canvassing of the election, we had three meetings on the same day, and if someone was just sick that day or out of town that day, it seems a little bit intense for that to be misconduct of office. And so, the suggestion from the Charter Review Commission was to set that as three meetings held on three, or meetings held on three separate days, and it also added some language regarding things that could qualify as good and sufficient cause to miss a meeting, such as illness, death in the family, pre-planned vacation, and the meeting was scheduled after you scheduled your vacation, that sort of thing. And then the change to 3.09 simply takes those, that good and sufficient cause information and references back to it, so that in 3.09, which references forfeiting your salary if you miss a meeting, it specifically provides that if you have good and sufficient cause to miss the meeting, you do not forfeit your salary for that meeting.
I've got no problem with any of these.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right, let's move on.
Proposition D, number of votes. I'm not sure this change is necessary, the more I've looked at it, but what, what the Charter Review Commission is recommending here is removing this language that says four affirmative votes are needed for this whole laundry list of things, and just saying that four affirmative votes are always needed. I'm having trouble thinking of something that doesn't fall into ordinance, resolution, action matter, issue, or motion, so we could probably leave it. It was just very wordy, and it was, somebody might try to argue that, oh, you only need three votes if there are only five people present, and it's not one of these things. But again, I can't think of something that's not one of those things.
So, are you suggesting that you don't believe this to be necessary?
I don't think it's necessary, now that I've looked at it again.
Okay. Anyone have any thoughts on Prop D?
No, believe it as is.
Councilmember Presunaga.
Well, I got a, something, I guess, we all have an equal vote, so I'm not, I'm understanding the message I got.
So, I, I think in some cities, they have a different number of votes required to pass an ordinance or a resolution versus just a regular motion. And so, I originally thought that's what this was trying to do, but somewhere along the line, they added the word motion as well. And so, I think instead of deleting everything, they added motion. And so I think instead of deleting everything, they added motion. And so now it's still, everything has, still requires four votes.
So if we, if we do that, then if somebody is absent, so we're at six people, three would be a majority, so we could never do a majority vote.
It would still be, if you have five people, right, three would be a majority. You'd still have to have four under the charter, and that's currently how it works. You have to have four for everything, no matter how many people are here. Unless it's a super majority and then you have to have more. Just because this is the way we currently do it, I don't, I don't think it's a necessary change.
Councilmember McKinney, you look perplexed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to figure out exactly what the difference is, like, what, what the commission was trying to accomplish.
We suggested that potentially a minute order might not be one of these things, except that when we pass a minute order, we make a motion to pass the minute order. And so the more I think about it, the more I go, well, that's a motion, that would still require four votes. I think that's how we got there, was when we were looking at this term minute order. It's like, well, minute order is not in here. But again, when we, when we pass anything, we say, I move to approve. It's always a motion.
Well, I think what, maybe some clarity that they were trying to express that the mayor is only one vote, just like all council members. So I guess that, that's what, what seems like to be resonating. But how do you make that clear? Do you make that clear with this amendment?
I don't think this amendment clarifies anything to do with the mayor. It was really just supposed to be, in an event where we have five people and a majority is three, potentially three, because in some cities, if it's a motion and you have five out of seven, you can pass a motion on three. And, but you can't pass an ordinance on three, you have to have four to pass an ordinance. So it just depends on what's in your charter. Our charter just lists everything out, instead of saying all actions require four affirmative votes, which would be cleaner, but again, do we need to take it to the ballot to be a little bit cleaner or not?
The, the one thing I'll say on this is, all I can see this accomplishing is slowing down governance, because we might not have the proper number of votes, or is this trying to do the opposite of that?
This is trying to require four votes for everything.
Yeah.
If you wanted to change it, we could do that.
Government moves slow enough as it is. Like, I don't think we need to be changing anything to allow for it to move more slowly, because we can't get something passed because someone, you know, is out of town for a wedding anniversary or something like that. That seems silly. I mean, we have, hear from people all the time who complain about how slow government moves, whether it's municipal, county, or, or federal. Like, let's, let's not raise the bar to make, are the passage of our decisions or future decisions, uh, go into effect more slowly.
That's also like when we're doing first and second readings, correct?
That's later in the agenda, or in the charter, and we'll get to that.
I'm sorry, I may be just thinking at it right as we're talking about this and votes and all that, right?
All right.
Right.
For clarity, currently.
Trying to imagine a scenario where we only had five, right?
Well, we have a quorum at five.
And then, yeah, we pass things with three votes.
For clarity, every single thing we do currently requires four votes.
Right, I, I actually like the idea of four, because you have to compromise more to get that fourth vote sometimes, and it, it makes it numerically, you have to have those. So everyone has to, you know, discuss it, come to some agreements. And with three, it just seems like it's too, some things could be passed, um, without majority.
Right. I, I think what the Charter Review Commission was trying to do here, and it is probably my fault, because I brought it up going, this is so many words, and all they really wanna say is that all votes take four, or all actions take four votes. I think what they really wanted to try to do is a distinction without a difference. At the end of the day, we don't do anything that isn't an issue, a matter, an action, or a motion. And so currently, everything requires four votes. And what they were trying to do was just say, everything requires four votes. So I think it's a distinction without a difference.
Right.
I guess that, that's where my confusion was coming from, was like, how is this different?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, like I said, when I was looking at it at the Charter Review Commission, and we were trying to make things cleaner and clearer, and I was trying to find something that could fit there, and I was like, well, technically, this doesn't say a minute order requires four votes, but then again, a minute order requires a motion, or an action, or, or it's a matter. So it still falls in there.
So leave it as it is.
I, I think leave it as it is, I think it's, it's fine the way it is.
Right.
So I wouldn't do the change.
I'm good with that.
Um, on expense reimbursement for section 3.09, the Charter Review Commission is recommending some language to try to clarify that council can either get their expenses paid through reimbursement or through some other methods, such as city directly paying for the item, or I suppose use of credit cards, something like that. Again, this is one of those that I think they're just trying to add clarifying language. I don't know that the clarifying language is needed, but I think it was something that the commission thought made it more transparent and cleaner.
It does, I think that's a helpful, I mean.
I've got no problems with this one.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
It's okay.
Michael?
No, I'm good on, I just want all of us to understand that, you know, we understand what, what these terms mean, but like, like with anything else, and just like we talked about before, our seats, you know, will, will eventually be vacated with new council members and a new mayor eventually in, in time. So let's look at it also in that sense that we're helping them set the precedent of, of what it is. So just not look at it as just for us, but for future councils to help, so that way they don't have problems years from now.
Well, this is the way we're doing it now, anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
Exactly.
Again, I don't know that we need this change to do it this way, but I do think it makes it more transparent.
Yes. Exactly.
So I think that was the intent.
I'd be, I'd be, I'd be good with that, but it's a great change, and then, uh, just, uh, yeah, I'm good with it.
All right, moving on.
Proposition F, finance director. The recommendation from the commission here is currently under the charter, the dismissal of the finance director required, uh, must be confirmed by city council by four votes. The Charter Review Commission is recommending changing that to five votes, and also requiring five votes to confirm the appointment of the finance director, who would then be recommended by the city manager and brought to council for confirmation. The commission thought it was important for the council to be more involved in the hiring of the finance director, because they thought it was a very important position. But at the same time, there's, there's an argument here that we're slowing down hiring processes and potentially kind of getting into the land that's usually, that usually belongs to the city manager. And so that could make it more difficult for him to manage employees.
Yes.
I do wanna make it clear that one of the things that I'm doing is providing pros and cons. I'm not taking a position on these. So if I, if I, just because I say it, doesn't mean that that's what I agree with. I'm just trying to get you to see both sides.
Go this way, remember this could happen.
Right.
Well, I would ask, who on this dais, or on that screen over there, has the experience to vet candidates to be a financial, uh, finance director?
Nope.
Yeah, not me.
What about you?
No, but I, but I could see the recommendation, you know, there, there is some, some validity in having, I guess, more, more powers to the council to, because the finance director is a key, is a key, key role, you know, to make sure the budget's right, projects are paid for, so.
So are all of our directors in key roles.
But this, but the finance director manages the treasury.
I, I just don't think we should have control over something so integral to the functionality of government. That, to me, provides opportunities to, you know, create levels of pressure around this employee, when we, we need straight information from this employee. So like, I just, I don't think, if we're trying to make decisions, like Councilmember Tobias was saying, uh, for, for future councils and, uh, people we don't even know, who don't even know that they are gonna serve at some point in the future, that this is something I don't really think that we need to incorporate into the purview of the decisions we make. This just seems like a little overreaching.
Well, I think that there's always like some fear of, like, finance directors or people giving council information, because maybe they don't want to say, hey, we're in a lot of debt, and maybe we should not spend this, or maybe this is not a good spending. And you're not gonna get an answer, because there's intimidation, there could be that. So I think what the commission's trying to find is just to let council have more freedom to, you know, or kind of create a, a safety around a key, um, city figure.
I think we already do that, we, we have outside auditors and we have bond council.
And currently, you confirm the dismissal, so the city manager cannot dismiss the finance director without confirmation from the city council currently.
That's what I was gonna bring up, and he'll take a majority of four-three vote, correct?
That's correct, that's the current charter.
To dismiss.
And I don't wanna see this role be politicized.
Yeah.
When it comes down to managing the money, you know, it, it shouldn't be, you know, at the, at the whims of council. You know, just trying to play devil's advocate here, let's say, uh, you know, you went to your finance director and he didn't, he told you that something you were passionate about, we didn't have the money for. All of a sudden, you start rallying people against him, and you get rid of him and try and replace him with somebody who, who just tells you what you wanna hear. That, that doesn't mean that you end up with a better finance director.
Yeah, so instead, we get that news from the finance director, and then we put it on him, over there. If it's what we don't like to hear.
Yeah.
Look at the titles, director, manager, okay? That, that's why we have city managers, that's why we have assistant city managers. We have directors, we have administrators. Follow the guideline of what their titles are on that end. Because yes, we, we are the ones who vote for the manager, we are the ones who vote for the chief of police. But what I think Dr. Harris is saying is that the director fits in the line of the administrative role already, correct?
Yes.
They fit in this category to where you look at our, in our, our, our tree itself, our, our city tree, where you have your head coach, assistant coach, defensive coach. That's how I always look at things, I look at it from that perspective sometimes. But you look at who's the key roles are, the financial director. We can ask, you know, we can go straight to the head coach right there about the funding. We can go straight to the coach there about the, the roads and, and everything like that. And then if we start getting into that mix, seven people are gonna have seven different opinions if we go straight to the finance director on that.
In other cities, do they have a finance director that council does this with?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So, so what was the intent then of the commission to bring this? Is it because?
The explanation I got out of the commission was a story of something that happened in Kyle many years ago that somehow involved, uh, a city manager and a finance director, and some, and they didn't really tell me what was happening, but essentially, the city manager was resigned in lieu of termination, and then the finance director walked out, and they wanted more separation between the city manager and the finance director. Their original recommendation was to have council appoint the finance director altogether. And that seems logistically difficult to me, because the city manager presents the budget through the finance director, and so if they're competing, then we could potentially have two competing budgets. Ultimately, the Charter Review Commission thought this was a compromise that would allow a little bit more council control.
Right, I mean, the process now is, hey, Brian, I wanna speak to the finance director, right? And he's, we say, okay, so I feel free to go and speak to the finance director and ask questions and find out about what's in the budget, what's getting paid for. So that's the process now, right? I mean, is, is, is there a different process?
No, that's.
Technically, he's supposed to escort you to the office.
No, but, but since we don't have staff employees as council, we, we go to the city manager, say, hey, Brian, I'd like to talk to the finance director about these turges, or about this project, or see what's there.
Yes, um, as well as any other staff member that you need to get information from. So, um, we, we work the same way with the finance director that we do with any other employee in the city, if you need information. It, it's really, you know, it, it's going from four to five votes. I mean, it's really kind of the, the central point, and I think the appointment was.
It was the four to five votes and adding the appointment, is currently.
I, I will tell you, you know, it's council's pleasure of how you, how you wanna handle it. It's unusual, that's an unusual provision. Uh, the council has the city manager that reports directly to you, and, uh, the council has the pleasure of hiring and firing the city manager, and that's, that's the ultimate control for the staff. So it's, it's a bit unusual, I haven't seen it before, in the other, uh, four cities that I've worked in. Not saying it doesn't exist somewhere else, but it is a bit unusual, but, um, it's, again, that's the committee's recommendation to you. So we wanted to bring it to you and just give you that, that, that information to see how you want to handle it.
I don't like that change.
I, I feel like I'm seeing a consensus to not move forward on this one.
I'm good with that.
Proposition G, officer and employees. This was another one where we were trying to create a little bit more clarity as to the role of, um, city manager versus city council, because there were some provisions that were a little bit concerned, conflicting. I think it was, um, this section, which I didn't put in here. I'm gonna have to go look at what it is. And the next, and, uh, this is 4.04, or, yeah, and then the next one was 4.05, and they're arguably inconsistent. So the idea was to remove some language that seems to allow the city council to require duties of individual employees that are not appointed by city council, which in 4.05 falls to the city manager.
Yeah.
It didn't give examples, it said, city council may not inconsistent with this charter, which is where I got confused, because there are other parts of the charter that says they can't, require other and further duties of any appointed officer or employee whose duties are prescribed herein and may define, and so it got.
I may think that it may be to where it's like council members cannot go and direct staff to do things without city manager.
Right.
Like, I, I can't go and tell somebody to go and mow over there, whatever, without getting authorization, or just contacting, going straight to the chief on that end.
We can't tell the staff what to do.
Yeah.
That was the intent of the change, was to make it abundantly clear, as it is in other portions of the charter. That's the way this is supposed to work.
Or if I see somebody that's mowing the grass, I'm like, hey, why, when you're done there, can you go mow over here? I, I'd have to go straight to Brian and say, Brian, you know, is there a way, what's the schedule like?
With the exception of any officer you appoint, you can, you can talk to those of us that you appoint. Idea is to not manage the rest of the employees.
So is this also saying that we could change job descriptions?
That is kind of what it looks like, yes, but again, that's inconsistent with other parts of the charter.
I do not like that.
Yeah, I like the idea of a hard separation between council and staff as far as.
And that's what Prop G is trying to decide, yeah. We're trying to get you to a clear separation between council and staff.
I'm definitely good with this change.
Looks like we're moving forward that one.
Have we, have we, have we ever had instances, I guess in the past, where maybe a council member tried to do this? I'm thinking in a bad past, uh, but as long as I've been here, I think the city manager has always, uh, we've always gone through the city manager. Um, we do go out and participate in events with, uh, city employees, but I don't think anybody gives direction. I think we have good conversations out there, but I don't think anybody's ever done, given direction, but, um, I'm good with passing it, I, I just don't think we need to, but if, if the future, we get a council member decides they wanna be telling, uh, staff what to do, I guess it would be a great, I, like Michael said, having something to prevent the future, I mean, to, to make sure that we're taking care of future councils as well. So I'm good with this one, if we wanna pass it.
Yeah.
This sounds like a consensus to move forward. Proposition H is on one-reading ordinances, which I think Councilmember Tobias was trying to talk about a little bit earlier. The commission had two separate changes to this, which would be in different sections of the charter. The first change was to add to the section that refers to things that can be currently passed on a single reading, including anything that receives seven votes, to add approval of ordinances calling and canvassing elections. Because calling and canvassing elections are both more or less ministerial duties that have to get done, and sometimes it's tricky to try to squeeze in a second meeting to call an election before the election deadline. And it's particularly tricky with canvassing, because technically, under the law, the quorum for canvassing is two, and so we do canvassing by resolution, so that we don't have to come back later, right now. I'd rather do it by ordinance, because it's cleaner.
Yeah.
The second recommended change was to emergency ordinances. We currently have a really restrictive provision on emergency ordinances, and they can only be effective for 60 days. The recommendation from the Charter Review Commission is to open that up a little bit and allow ordinances that are necessary for actual emergencies, for some sort of catastrophic situation, to be finally passed with five votes on one reading, without having to come back in 60 days.
It's not an emergency if you have to bring it back.
Right. The only emergency ordinances I could find that the cities passed in the past few years were related to COVID. Right. The only emergency ordinances I could find that the cities passed in the past few years were related to COVID. And they all had to come back in 60 days. And so it's, it got a little tricky.
Well, we had also the apocalypse here, so we've had some, we've had some bad stuff here happen. So, yeah, I don't, I don't want to have to come back.
Because I look at, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor Portivis, the reason why, I kind of agree that we have an emergency situation where we have to get a contractor or a vendor or something like that and we've got, we need to get water, we need to get electricity poles up and we got a contractor ready to go. And we have a contract we can sign off. All we need is five votes and then we're good to go. Instead of having to wait, I guess, another meeting just to approve it when it's a dire, a dire need.
Primarily if, say, we need access to unreserved fund balance, we have to amend the budget and now we're having to come back twice because we can't get to the money in time.
Amy, is there any circumstances where someone could take advantage of this, a bad road council?
I would say that there.
We might just change.
I would say that there have been councils in Texas who have taken advantage of this sort of provision in the past, where they'll start bringing everything as an emergency. We tried to put some boundaries around what qualifies as an emergency. And I'm happy to bring this on the fifth and kind of let you tell me if you want to add more boundaries on what's an emergency and what's not.
I would love to see the boundaries because I would hate to see a road council take advantage of this. We're, look, we're trying to do what's best for our residents and especially in, in the event of something really terrible happening in our city. But at the same time, I, I always worry about bad characters, right? You worry about somebody, you know, taking advantage of this loophole. And we've seen any state advantage of loopholes before, so I'd love to see something come back on some parameters, please.
I'll bring you what I provided to the charter review commission on the fifth. And then if we want to make changes to that, I'm happy to add them in at that meeting.
Thank you, Amy.
Proposition I, this is another one where the charter review commission was trying to clarify something that I don't necessarily think is needed. The current 5.02 provides that charters are on, or that the general election is on Tuesday in November. They wanted to change that to specifically refer to the November uniform election date, I guess in case it's ever not on a Tuesday. But the idea is that the Tuesday in November is the general election date or is the uniform election date in all circumstances. And it also removes some language about the transitional election schedule from when we started doing a single member district, so we set the schedule. So they wanted to remove the, the language that shows how the transition was done and then just put in, this is how we do it currently. So one and three are elected at the same time, two, four, and the mayor are elected at the same time. Those are, there's nothing wrong with any of those changes. It's just if we're trying to prioritize, this may be one that's less high on the scale.
I'm fine with that, I guess. I don't really see an issue with that.
I don't know. Why would have to, why would we have to prioritize if we're going, yeah, let's, if it makes sense, change it.
Twenty-six ballot propositions could, could be a lot for voters.
Okay.
I'm an approval of this, but I see what you're talking about.
Maybe we leave this as a maybe and we can decide if we have too many propositions at the end?
Oh, yeah.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
We're prioritizing.
Yeah, we've eliminated a couple so far that we're not going to change, so.
Proposition J, polling places. So this removes the affirmative requirement that city hall always serve as a polling location. And part of the thought behind that was if city hall is just under construction that week and we don't have access to the Falcone Room, and now we have to figure out how to squeeze polling locations into other parts of the building, it would be better to be able to put it in a different city building. So the idea was to say that a city building would be a polling place with preference for city hall if it's available. If city hall is not available, we could do it somewhere else. That's really the intent.
That makes sense.
I'm thinking, I, I understand what the intent is. I'm just worried about, look, honestly, voters are used to going to the vote, the locations are used to going. And I've seen it in election after election where if there's a place that's not open, they, they don't know where to go. It's, it's kind of hard. It kind of encourages people wanting to vote. We're trying to encourage people to vote. I would like to see a provision saying that if something is wrong with the building in city hall, then we could go to Plan B, but really, I want to be an emphasis that city hall is, is the voting location that people are going to be familiar with. It's got to be circumstances beyond our control that allows us to move the election.
I'm sure that's exactly what it says, Robert.
I think that is what it says.
That's actually how the language got added this way. At least one commissioner had the exact same point that council member Rizzo just made. And so we added this language that a preference, that preferences given to city hall when it's available.
It says a preference, but I, I just don't know if that's binding enough. I think that's what kind of worries me. I just don't feel like it's binding enough.
If I might add, you know, we're going to have two new, we have two new buildings that we can still use now. We can have the Republic for Public Drive and we're also going to have the community center over there off Dacey. So let's not limit just city hall as far as voting locations. We have two new buildings that we can start utilizing for polling places. So as much as we have instilled in everybody's mindset that city hall is the place to go, that is probably what another reason why we looked at looking at other facilities that the city could utilize as voting places. So now it's not only we have city hall, but in future elections or in the next years or so when these buildings are up and running, we actually have more polling places that we can utilize.
We have used other polling places, but city hall has limitations, you know, and using, like council member Tobias said, using another one may be a better option than using city hall for a number of reasons. When, when the election turnout is large, we get, we, at one point had a line around the building here, no parking. And if we had had an option to not use city hall, I think that there could have been better places. I can see a preference for city hall and we generally know if the election is going to be heavily utilized or not.
And the other aspect is, is we can't, we can't always rely on the school district to use their facilities as well.
Yeah.
Because we interrupt their services and their, and their, their schedule. So it's just, again, I'm looking at this long-term, guys, as far as what we have here.
Well, we made more than one.
I'm good with using other locations because we now have three other buildings. But I, I know, what I want to emphasize is that people already know city hall. They know that there's a place to go there. And the last thing we want to do is discourage voter turnout. Because people are creatures of habit, right? They, they, they're used to coming here. And if we add another location, I'm good with adding another location. I just want to make sure that we preserve the city hall for the main location because people are used to it. And especially, you know, we look at our voter turnout. So I mean, any change could really hurt that voter turnout. And so that's kind of what I'm concerned about because I've seen it. I've been out there, you know, seeing the polls. I, I, I watch the numbers every election. I look at the voting sites and I can, I can tell you when I'm listening to people in the lines, I can hear them when they're talking about change or just a little change, it, it kind of discourages them. So I, I, I'm good with using other locations where we're going to have a big turnout, especially when we have big elections, whether they're, you know, state or federal. But I just want to make sure that we still always have that one place people are familiar with and that's city hall available, unless there's something going on.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. But to counter on Dr. Harris's point, Dr. Rezo, Mr. Rezo, is that we have other facilities we can use. Yes, city hall can be a main area. But like she stated, there's a long line that goes across. So when you say it discourages voters, that could be it. So let's look at it in the mind of the voters. If there's other polling locations that could be centralized.
I, I support, I support the other voting locations.
We can look at that. That's why it says required.
The other voting locations. Opening up more voting locations is important. Getting vote, voting locations near the residents that live in that area is really important as well. But I just want to make sure we keep city hall number one priority because people are used to it.
I want to jump in here. This, Robert, this is not, this isn't an and/or situation. This is in the event that city hall is under construction or flooded, that we then have the ability to not use it in, in favor of a location that is not under construction or flooded. But to the point that you guys are, I think, we're probably all in agreement that if we, as our city grows, we can, like Councilmember Tobias was saying, we don't have to rely on the school district. I know east side voting locations has been a problem at, at times in the past and we are growing east. So we need to have flexibility regarding the, you know, even though it doesn't really have anything to do with this item, like everyone, a couple of people have brought it up of having accessibility to more city buildings for voting locations. So like, I'm good with that, but that's not this item. This item is just in the event of an emergency, we have the ability to move it, right?
Yeah. I mean, the idea is if it's not available and then potentially in the future, if it's not the best location anymore, but I think that, I don't, I don't think you guys want that part on the table. I think you just want if it's not available.
Yeah, there's some, there's allure. There's something about coming to city hall and voting. I love coming here to vote. So I'm not trying to say we need to not vote here anymore, but if there is an emergency situation where this cannot be utilized, then we need the flexibility on, you know, even on short notice to be able to make a move somewhere else.
I'm good, I'm good with that. As long as it's an emergency. I'm definitely on key with doing that.
All right, let's, let's move forward and we can look at that language on the fifth and let us know if you want to change anything. Proposition K impacts three different sections related to single member districts. The idea is to clarify in a few places that don't specifically say that only the people who can take action related to single member districts are voters in the single member districts. We want to make it clear that the only people who can vote in a single member district election are people who live in that district. We want to make it clear that the only people who can sign a recall petition for a single member district member have to live in that district. And then we also want to make it clear that the single member, single member district person must continuously live in that district while serving.
Yep.
So is there, is there a change here that only, the recall can only happen by voters in that?
Under the current recall provision, the same requirements apply for everybody up there, whether you're a single member district or at large, you have to get a certain percentage of the voters citywide to sign. And so in theory, if people in district two don't like the district six representative, you could get enough voters out of district two to sign a recall petition and that might be valid against your district six representative, even though none of those people can vote for him. So the idea was to stop that.
Yeah.
But that's the way it's currently written.
That can currently happen.
So the idea was to say you have to get that many, that percentage of voters out of that district to sign. So if it's, I can't remember what the percentage is off the top of my head, but let's say it's 5% of the voters. You then have to get 5% of the voters in district six to sign. And then if 5% sign in district six, then the people in district six can vote.
So that would drop from getting 5% of 65,000 to getting 5% of maybe 20,000.
Right. But those are the only people that can vote for you. So that was the idea.
This change seems equitable.
That, that was the thought. And the real, the real thing that got, I think, the commission was when we were discussing the possibility of people in a different district recalling somebody who was not their council member.
That they were never allowed to vote for in the first place.
Yeah, like if Tobias took a vote that negatively affected Plum Creek and they wanted to punish him and that was his deciding vote, they could essentially work to recall him.
Right, because there are more than 5% of our voters in district four or district two. And so if, that, that was the concern. We wanted to make sure that the people who are recalling the council member are people who could vote for the council member.
And, and keep in mind that it's only 5% of that. So it'd be 5% of 20,000. That's the number of people in that.
I can't recall what percentage it is off the top of my head. I think it might be five of the registered voters.
Voting age population, so it's not 20,000.
Well, it's registered voters too.
Registered voters.
After registered voters.
Yeah, registered voters. There'll be a lot less. Yeah, so you would need a whole lot to get your district representative recalled.
I think that's probably accurate, Councilmember Rizzo, but you would at least limit them to people who live in your district as opposed to people who live outside your district.
Okay.
I think, I think we're okay with this one.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think the committee looked at it and they, they recommended it.
The scary thing scares me is that you get someone that wants to take out their district rep because they might want to be in that seat. So they let, they don't need to work as hard. They can get less votes to get you out. That's the only drawback on it.
I'm seeing a consensus, I think, to move forward.
I'm perfectly fine with this.
I'm good with this.
Proposition L, initiative and referendum. This is one that I really like and I don't like it for the reasons people think I like it. Because the, when you look at it, it says that the city attorney can kill this petition within 30 days. That's not why I like it. I like it because the way our initiative and referendum process is currently written. Somebody brings us a draft petition and we, you know, stamp it and then they go circulate it and then they bring it back. And then after they've gotten enough signatures, the charter requires that the city attorney review that initiative ordinance or that ordinance has been referred and determine whether or not it's eligible or legal. And if the city attorney determines at that point that it's not legal, the petition dies. And so now we're killing a petition after it's already been circulated and gotten 1,500, 1,600 signatures as opposed to before, where we could determine, hey, this ordinance isn't legal because it violates the constitution or this petition, you can't refer this ordinance because it's approving the budget and you can't refer the budget ordinance. Something like that. It's easier if we tell them upfront before they go get the, the signatures as opposed to at the end after they've done the work. The other change is that it includes a provision that would require me as the city attorney to rewrite that ordinance in legal form if I can. And so if they propose an ordinance that I think, hey, sections one through four of this ordinance are legal, but section five is illegal, instead of just rejecting that entire ordinance, I would rewrite it for them and then they could pass that one around for signatures. I think this makes the process more clear and I think it's a better change because I just, I hate the idea of having to tell somebody after they've gotten 1,500 signatures, oh yeah, that was never legal in the first place.
And I've never liked the idea that the original petition wording can just be thrown out with no, no options for the person who wanted to circulate the petition.
If you, if you do it at the beginning, they have the ability to then like make changes to it, to make it so that it's acceptable. As opposed to at the end, they've already circulated it. Well, you can't go back and change it once it's been circulated. So then they'd have to start over.
Yeah, this works better.
That's what this would do.
So what's the requirement, though, on the petition? I guess my understanding is, has to be a signature of a registered voter of Kyle?
Mm-hmm, they have to be registered voters of Kyle. And again, I can't remember exact percentages off the top of my head, but that one is a percentage of people who voted in the last general election. Percentage of, like, a number equal to the number, to a percentage of number of voters who voted in the previous election.
So a digital petition is not valid, right?
No, they hand circulate them, they're hand signed.
And so you would just be helping them if it's, if it's worded wrong before they get started and then it gets dismissed because it was.
This actually happened to me in my previous city. Somebody filed an initiative petition and one of the sections violated the First Amendment of the Constitution. And so we redrafted it without that section and then they were able to circulate it. And so that, it just, it just seems like a, a better process to me.
Yeah, this is a better streamlined.
Yeah, my first concern was that maybe it would, you know, discourage people from, from doing petitions and, and trying to enact legitimate needed change, but I don't feel like that is the case now that I've.
That was not the goal. The goal was just to take something that would happen later and push it earlier.
It looks like it helps, actually. And then having Amy come in and help them with language. I don't know if I'm real crazy about that, but I, I guess, you know, she does work for, for the city, so the city is the resident, so I'm good with it moving forward when I think of it that way.
Now, do, will they, is there an opportunity to increase the circulation time if they are need more time to get the votes and they know they can get those signatures? There's a 90-day circulation, that's of getting the signatures, right?
If that's something that council wanted to do, we could give them more time. It's currently 90 days. The commission also recommended giving the city secretary 15 business days to review instead of 14 days total. And then if the city secretary couldn't validate the signatures, we would give them 15 business days to go get more signatures. And then we would give the city secretary seven business days to review those signatures.
So nowadays seems appropriate based on other cities' standard?
Yeah.
And that could be a total of 105, right?
Right. If they submit it and it's lacking, then they get an additional 15. And business days, the 15 days are business days. So that's really an extra three weeks, three weeks approximately.
What's the current?
That's almost four months worth of.
I think that's too long.
That's, that's a longer time than we think it is.
Yeah, this is third of a year.
Currently, it's.
That's almost half a year.
Currently, it's 90 days to circulate, 14 days for the city secretary to review. If the city secretary can't validate all the signatures, they get 14 days to recirculate and then. And then, when that comes back, the city secretary gets seven more days to review. That's the current process.
So, is there any interest to try to pare down the total, the volume of days before I go any further? Is there any...
I, I don't think it should be any less, but I don't think it should be any more either. I think it's an appropriate number.
Yeah, I think so, too.
The number of signatures that we have to, that we would have to get.
The, the reasoning from the commissioners to change the days was to give the city secretary's office more time to review. And then they said, well, for giving the city secretary's office more time to review, we should give them the same amount of time to recirculate. And that was the thought process.
That's fair.
Isn't the time to...
I meant, I meant, going with the, the recommendation, I think is appropriate.
The, the time to review is to validate signatures, correct?
Right.
So, they submit, and then the validation of the signatures begins, and then they can actually go back out and get more.
Right. So, after we, after the city secretaries reviewed it, if we say, hey, you're 20 signatures short, they get 15 business days to go get 20 more signatures.
Yeah. I, that seems like a long time, given the number of signatures is proportionate to total number of votes in the previous year's general election. So, I don't know. This just, this isn't proportionate to anything else, and so, I just think that... But, look, I'm not going to die in this hill. Four months just seems like a long time. That's a, a third of a year.
Yeah, I, I think living as is. I think we're good as is.
So, I'm seeing...
I think it's already pretty clear. We have the 90 day, they have 90 days right now. Correct?
This just gives the city secretary 15 business days instead of 14 days.
Right, to review.
But then we're adding days to the others as well, right?
Yeah, they, they thought if they gave our office more time to review, that it was only fair to give the petitioner more time to circulate in response.
I don't think that matters.
How much more time? Just one day?
It's, uh, it went from 14 days to 15 business days, which again is approximately three weeks.
Except they don't circulate the petitions on business days.
That's true.
They circulate petitions on weekends.
Oh, okay. I, I get it now. Okay. I'm good. All right.
That's not a rule.
No, I'm, I'm saying that they don't necessarily just limit that to business days. So, if you want to tell them they have 10 days instead of 15 business days to recirculate it, that's 10 days.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with, you're saying now it is 14 days and 15 business, and now the, so how many additional days is that actually in?
It's a week.
It's an extra week.
Five business days per week.
Yeah.
I mean, bear a lot of, a lot of folks are working during...
But not to keep some circulated weekends.
Right, so the only time they have the circulated petition is weekends. So, it looks like it's a long time, but work schedules...
I'm, I'm fine.
I'm okay with that.
I think we're moving forward with this one as written, is what it sounds like. Okay. Proposition M, recall. The recommendation here from the Charter Review Commission was to decrease the number of times that a council member could be recalled during their term from three to two. And the reasoning for that was that the commission thought it was logistically difficult to even, to even get three recall positions through, petitions through, because it's 90 days to circulate, you can't do it within the first six months or the last three months. And it was just, we're looking at barely over a year, and trying to get three recall petitions through seemed difficult to them. So, they thought two seemed reasonable. It also seemed like enough times, like if you voted twice in two years, to, to not recall the person, adding a third time, they thought was maybe too much.
Yep.
I agree with this one.
Yep.
City manager appointment. The purpose of this is to, to provide consistency throughout the charter, and make it clear in every section that refers to how the city manager is appointed, that it requires five affirmative votes to appoint or remove the city manager. In some sections, it says five, in some sections, it says four. We just want to make it consistent.
I think it should be five.
I mean, it, it is five, because one of the sections says five, and so, I can guarantee you that if you try to fire a city manager with less than five, they're going to point to the provision that says it's five.
Yeah.
The, the point is just to make it consistent. Proposition O, internal auditor. The Charter Review Commission is recommending adding section 8.15 to the charter, which provides that the city council may create the position of internal city auditor, which would be appointed, supervised, and removed by a majority vote of city council. We have some considerations on this. The commission wanted this option to give council the ability to, in the future, create this position. Staff went through and benchmarked a whole lot of cities in the state, to be honest. We set this out across listservs to see if anyone would let us know what their, what their process was. And out of that, only one city was under 100,000 that had, that had an internal auditor at all. And then we, we also benchmarked how much staff each of these audit departments had, and none of them had less than two staff. And so, we got with the HR department, and we determined that for a two-person internal audit department, the cost would be at least $300,000 per year. And, so that's a significant cost, especially when we're trying to think of whether or not we would have enough work for two people. We also noted that the current provision that we have in the charter related to our independent audit, which I think is the one before, it was like 8.14, would be the one before this, provides that the, the independent auditor can, throughout the year, perform various audits of the city at the direction of city council. So, you already have the ability to request audits, or audits of specific projects, if that's what you want to do. And so, for that, for those reasons, we weren't really sure that this provision was needed. Originally, the Charter Review Commission wanted to make it a mandatory provision, and then when they started looking at the cost, they tried to make it an optional provision, and that's where we landed.
This feels a whole lot like paying two organizations to do the exact same job.
Well, it is.
Colossal waste of taxpayer money. I'm not, I'm not seeing a, a positive for having two separate auditors, internal and external. I feel like if, if we need two separate auditors to, to keep us in check, then we've got much bigger problems than, than an auditor.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of this change at all.
The other thing I would say is that if at any point the city manager believes that we need a internal city auditor, he can recommend that in the budget. So, it's not, we're not currently prohibited from having a city auditor.
Well, we have a finance department that's gold star for years and years and years. You know, they've, they've shown their reliability.
I mean, the audits that we do receive say as much.
Yes, they do.
And, and if, you know, again, thinking forward to times that are not what we have now, you know, we do have the ability to get our external auditor, which honestly, I would trust more than somebody that's biased, that works here, who's looking for things whether they're, they're not. I would rather an impartial group be doing that. But we could ask for that at any time. I just, I'm, I'm having a really hard time finding any necessity and benefit here.
Yeah. Now, if we're trying to declutter the ballot with unnecessary changes, this is probably not a necessary one, because any one of us could put an item on the agenda to put this to a vote at any point in time, correct?
Like, if you wanted an audit of a specific city function, yeah, at any point, we could, we could put a vote in for that, and we have an independent auditor who could perform that service. There wouldn't be a cost, of course, but we'd present that to you.
So, the power to already do this is within us if we were to want it?
Yeah. Yeah, that brings to mind, I remember the credit card audit. So, council voted for that, right? And it did take some time. I mean, what they found, the findings are small to the expense of the audit. But, yeah, I mean, I agree. I, I don't know that we can, we have enough work in, in our city right now to justify the, a $300,000 two-person, you know, internal audit department. And that's something that, as you said, the city manager can recommend in the budget for us.
And maybe that number seems a little small to me, because you're looking at programming, you're looking at equipment. So, there's a lot of tools they're going to need besides the FTEs, and they were, I don't know if that includes the insurance for these auditors as well. But I think, the number just seems a little bit low for two auditors.
And this was a minimum, a minimum estimate based on approximate salary and benefits. It did not include office space, equipment, any of that. It was annual cost for staff.
All right, thank you.
Proposition P, planning commission terms. The purpose of this item is to align the number of years that a planning commission, a planning commissioner can serve with the terms. They serve two-year terms currently, and the current charter provision says they cannot serve for more than five consecutive years. And so, five divided by two does not get to a, a whole number, and so, I wanted to change it. The charter, the Charter Review Commission is recommending two two-year terms, which would be four years total, so it's one year less. I think I originally recommended three two-year terms, which would be six years total and one year more. Charter Review Commission thought four years was enough time. I'll entertain whatever council wants to consider.
I don't have any problem with their amendment.
I almost feel like four years may not be enough.
Well, kind of it isn't, but... But if they rec, what was their logic to recommend it? That...
They, they thought six years was too long. I don't think they gave a lot of reasoning for why they thought six years was too long, but that was the, that was the idea.
The thing about that that does concern me, though, is that I think six years isn't too long, because we have so much going on in the city, and some of the development issues lag over years, many years, some of them, that they might be seen. So, the experience is really important.
So, maybe we want to change this to three consecutive terms?
I think that's what I think about is the experience, and thinking about how, what's the learning curve, you know? They, our commissioners go through training as well. So, the city has actually put in investment in these commissioners to train them. And, you know, I, you know, a lot of companies, when they train you, they owe you to a commitment of so many years, and the longer we keep them, we're keeping them to that commitment of the pay training we're giving them to utilize that for the benefit of the residents.
So, are you saying you'd like to leave it at three consecutive two-year terms?
I think I'd be comfortable with that.
It would be two.
We have a consensus at three two-year terms?
I, I think three two-year terms is appropriate.
So, it's six years on planning commission instead of five?
So, they changed six years instead of five.
Right. Okay.
Sure.
Proposition Q was, Charter Review Commission wanted to specifically add some language to the duties of who's, of the planning commission, planning and zoning commission. Specifically, they wanted to add that the planning commission may make comments on any proposed development agreements, and also an affirmative provision, finding that the planning commission may take no action that is in violation of applicable law. I have no issues with either of these changes, but I also don't think they're necessary, because currently, there's nothing that prohibits the planning review, the planning and zoning commission from reviewing just development agreements, if that's what they're asked to do. And there's, the requirement to not violate law is always applied and will continue to apply. But I don't have any issue with putting on the ballot if council wishes to do so.
I don't think we need it.
Okay.
I, I agree with her, with Councilmember Ozo.
I don't think we need it.
Okay.
It's not necessary. I mean, we don't want to put too much on that ballot in terms of the props.
I don't think it's a matter of putting a lot of items on the ballot. It's a matter of, does this fit what the planning commission should, is that their primary position, is to give comments to the city manager on proposed developments versus giving the comments from within, in the developers themselves, that make the vote to recommend to bring to council?
Right.
Because we were, we would be the ones that would have the final say on, on that. So, do you know the reasoning why they felt that the planning, that the planning commission can provide their information, or ask questions to the city manager ahead of time? Is it just so that way they could have more knowledge of what the proposed agreements are, or what they're trying, the developers trying to do?
I don't recall specifically what they said. I feel like it had something to do with the fact that typically, projects with a development agreement are brought to the P and Z to review PUDs, because the PUDs are usually related. But, at the same time, the PUD is specifically in the planning and zoning commission's purview, because it's a zoning issue, whereas a development agreement may have some information that deals with zoning, but it's really got more information that deals with more general city issues. So, it's, they still see the projects, is really what I'm trying to say. So, they still get to comment on the projects, and, and most instances, maybe not all, because of the PUD coming. But, I think they wanted just more people looking at development agreements in general.
Okay. So, they wanted to, they wanted Brian's feedback on this. So, let's say they had the planning and zoning meeting, Brian would be here. Is that what, that what they were recommending, that they had questions about specific developments, they can ask the manager the questions, or...
There's similar language that allows the planning and zoning commission currently in the charter. I don't remember which one of the subsections it is, but it's in the same provision. It allows them to make comments on the capital improvement program. And so, I think it was the same sort of language, but related to all development agreements. But it's, it is permissive, and so, it still doesn't require that all development agreements get brought to the planning and zoning commission. It just says that they, they have the option to make comments on the development agreements, as opposed to just the PUD.
I, I think it's really the financial terms in the development agreements that council's looking at. We're having closed session discussions on those elements. Those are in the development agreements, they're not really subject to the purview of P and Z, but the PUD zoning, some of the other characteristics that they see in the development, that would be a P and Z item they would see, but not necessarily all the financial terms.
Okay.
So, I, I think that's kind of, I think that's the request, if I understand it. But, I just want to make sure I clarified it for you.
The financial part versus the concept design?
Right.
I think that's correct. Correct me if I'm wrong.
If that's the case, that is murky language.
Okay.
I would be okay with them looking at the financial development agreements, if that's what they're requesting.
The planning and zoning commission is not requested. The Charter Review Commission has requested that, that this be added to give them the ability to look at development agreements. And they didn't really get into whether it was the financial terms or the development standards. It was more that they would get run by the P and Z. I think the development standards already are run by the P and Z, because the PUDs go to the P and Z. And so, all that they're not getting are the financial terms, which is not really a zoning planning function. It's more of a city function.
I don't think that they need that. I don't think that aids, or should be factored in to planning and zoning-related decisions.
Okay. Proposition R. The purpose of Proposition R is to move two sections in the charter that are currently in chapter, or article 11 to article 13, because they feel weird in article 11. Article 11 is mostly about utilities and franchises, except for the last two provisions, 11-11 and 11-12, which are about lease and sale and contracts to manage city properties that are not, some, including utilities, but also including parks and sports facilities and other pools, things like that. That, if I was looking for a prohibition on selling a city pool, I wouldn't really look in the article titled Utilities and Franchises. And so, we thought maybe there was a better place to put it. Charter Review Commission is recommending article 13, which is general provisions. This is another one of those that, like, I, I like it. I think it would be cleaner, but it's also not a high priority if we're trying to prioritize, because it's not really changing much language.
I mean, this is confusing to us, I'm going to guess, and it's probably going to be confusing on a ballot, but it's, what's... Yeah, I don't, I don't really see. I'm not an advocate of making change, just to make change.
So, I have no problems putting this one to the vote, letting the people decide.
I'm not going to, I don't...
I'm not opposed to it.
It's up to the group.
Well, I mean, I just don't want to bring a lot of confusion. I mean, it is not even clear to us. I think what they're trying to get is alphabetical, the Roman numerals should be consistent, and maybe not be mixed up with numerical. I, I just don't, I don't see this yet as, what is, what the intent is.
I think if it's confusing to council, I don't disagree with the suggestion to perhaps not include it.
Right.
Reconsider it at a future time.
Table that one.
Proposition S, Charter Review, or sorry, Ethics Commission. The Charter Review Commission is recommending multiple changes to section 12.01, which is the section that deals with the Ethics Commission. The first change is they want to include minimum requirements for the Code of Ethics, so they want the Code of Ethics to include certain provisions, including a travel and expense policy. So, they want the Code of Ethics to include certain provisions, including a travel and expense policy, which we currently don't include in our Code of Ethics. It's outside of the Code of Ethics. They also want to maintain the current process where each council member nominates a commissioner to the Ethics Commission. But instead of having the terms be coterminous with the term of the council member who nominates them, they want them to serve a straight three-year term. So, that would kind of take away some of the dependence of the Ethics Commissioner on keeping their job if the council member doesn't. And then, they wanted to add a requirement for Ethics Compliance Officer to have certain experience. Some considerations on that. The first one is currently our travel and expense policy is separate from the Code of Ethics. If we keep it separate, it's easier to amend because we're not having to go and amend the entire Code of Ordinances. And you could amend it maybe through different methods. That said, the separate policy is currently outside of the jurisdiction of the Ethics Commission. So, if that's something that we want to include in the Ethics Commission jurisdiction, perhaps we do want to add it to the Code of Ethics or at least reference it in the Code of Ethics. The other thought is the current commissioners, they only serve until the nominated councilman relieves. So, this would be a change. There have been at least a couple of people who've come here at Public Comment and suggested that they don't want council appointing, nominating individual commissioners. That can't change without a charter amendment. And again, the Charter Review Commission is not recommending that change. They want to leave it more or less as is. And then, the other thing to think about is experience requirements for the Ethics Compliance Officer. I think there are a lot of things about them that make them a really good idea. The primary downside is that we might have trouble finding someone who has experience. I think they're recommending five years as a licensed attorney with preference given to somebody with municipal experience.
This is a specialty. It is hard to find ethics attorneys. I know another city that has searched and searched.
I would say our current Ethics Compliance Officer can meet those experience requirements. The two we had previous to her could not, or at least one of them for sure could not.
And let's remember that when we went out and looked for a compliance officer, only one person applied. This is a reminder.
I don't think we could touch this one. I think we need to pass.
Okay. Want to leave it alone? Okay. Proposition T, accepting gifts. This would amend Section 12.02 to require that city council define the words nominal value because it currently says nominal value, but does not define it. And what it would do would be to require the city council to, by ordinance, adopt a definition of nominal value that includes a per gift limitation and an annual limitation on gifts from any single source. So, that it's clear that nominal value is $100 or $50 or whatever it is.
Now, if we set that value, in order to change it, we'd have to put it back on a ballot in the future, right?
So, that's why they're recommending putting in language that requires you to adopt it by ordinance. And that way, you could change the ordinance as inflation comes in. And maybe $100 is not worth as much as it was when we first adopted it as the nominal value. Maybe that nominal value should be $200.
Right.
But I think that's why they're recommending the ordinance because that way, it is flexible for changes in value.
Are there downsides to this?
I mean, the primary downside is that we have to go determine what nominal value means, which I think we kind of all have an idea of. Our financial disclosure has a limit of, I want to say $100, but Jennifer can correct me. So, currently, we provide financial disclosure of any gift over $100 anyway. And then, we would just have to remember to change it if circumstances change and we feel like it's no longer sufficient.
So, we're already requiring anything over $100 to be reported?
Annually, you fill out a financial disclosure as a council member. Department directors fill them out as well. And we are required to report gifts over a certain dollar amount. Again, I think it's $100.
I don't think we should touch it, right, Robert? I mean, is this something that you think we need to look, you know?
I don't know. If we received a gift over $100, that's kind of... That's why I was wondering what this was about because I'm like, man, who's getting a gift? I'm not getting a gift, but what do you call it?
Never received a gift, yeah.
Yeah, this got nothing to do with... Yeah, this got nothing to do with our... Just to make sure and be clear, this has nothing to do with our campaign budgets, right? This is outside that.
Campaign contributions are always separated out. What this came from was the Charter Review Commission asked me to benchmark different ethics codes and ethics provisions. And they liked some language, and some of the language they liked was the definition of nominal value.
I don't think it's something we need to mess with.
I mean, if somebody was to give a gift, say, here's a coffee cup for you, how do I know that was not $105?
I would argue that...
I mean, what are we gonna ask the person? How much did that cost? Does I need to report it?
Yeah, I understand the logic there.
I mean, that's pretty much what it's saying.
On the flip side, somebody hands you a Rolex.
Yeah.
Says, hey, I just want to show my token of appreciation.
Yeah. There's obviously that, but there's also, you know, where's that fine line? And of course, we all know...
Well, I think that's what they're asking us to clarify.
Something I would point to here is that there's nothing that currently prohibits us from changing the Code of Ethics to include a set dollar amount limit on gifts. And we can do that currently if we want to.
So, it doesn't have to be by charter?
It doesn't have to be in the charter to make us do it.
And we require reporting of anything over $100 anyway?
Right.
Currently.
Annual, annually, for...
Yeah, that's a big thing. They're requiring it so that people already know where if somebody's getting a gift over $100. And if it's an extravagant gift, then they have to answer the voters on that. So, yeah, just, yeah.
I'm getting a consensus on leaving this one alone.
And I guess what they're trying to get at, that you can get one gift under $100, but you can get multiple gifts since there's no limit on, per year, on how many gifts a council member receives?
I think that was the consideration on adding an annual limit. So, if you can accept a gift of under $100, maybe from one person or one entity, you can't get more than $1,000 during the year, something like that.
Yeah.
And again, if that's something council likes, we can add that to the Code of Ethics later anyway.
Yeah, I think it belongs in the ethics, right? Because, I mean, we don't want someone just receiving multiple gifts, you know, as they're serving over and over. So, maybe that's just an ethics thing.
Okay. Proposition U is on conflicts of interest. This would be amendments to two different sections in the charter, 12.03 and 12.04. In 12.03, it adds language that I argued was absolutely necessary because currently, 12.03 prohibits any city employee from being a party to any land transaction or any contract with the city. I've requested an exception for eminent domain and for any contracts that are available to the rest of the public on the same terms. Because I am an employee of the City of Kyle. I live in the City of Kyle. And I need to pay a water bill. And if I needed a contract related to that water bill, I need to be able to do that without it violating the city charter. I also would argue that if the city needed to expand the road in front of my house, and this provision applied without an eminent domain exception, I could argue that they didn't have the right to come take that portion of my yard for the road. So, the purpose of this is to make sure that employees who happen to live in Kyle are still able to do the things the same as the other residents who live in Kyle. And then, 12.04 was a clarification on the recusal process when you have a conflict of interest. And it was to provide that contracts that violate the charter provisions related to conflicts of interest are void, which a lot of other cities have in their charter or in their ethics code.
We can add this one.
Yeah, I'm good with this one.
I'm good with it. You know, I want to protect our employees too, make sure they have the same protection that the residents. We don't want to punish them for living in Kyle. We actually want to encourage them to live in our city because they'll care more about it.
Okay. So, that's Proposition U.
So, just to clarify on that 12-4, how does that work? I mean, if someone has a conflict of interest, they didn't disclose, the item passes, and then later, it's found there was a conflict. How does that work? I mean, how does that void? If it... I mean, what makes it voided? An ethics violation or a legal violation?
It would be a contract that violated the city charter, so it would be void.
Legally and ethically?
Essentially, the counterargument to that is that it would absolutely result litigation in probably every circumstance if we said, oh, well, that contract was void. Now, our contractor is likely to sue us to try to enforce the contract. In most situations, when a city enters into a contract that's void by law, the court will find that the contract was void by law, but that's not always a guarantee.
Yeah, I think maybe we should look at this as you all said, the ballot. Is this recommended to go to ballot?
This would be the proposal for Prop U. It would be to make that one change to contracts with city employees who live in the city, as well as the change to make any contracts that violate the conflict of interest provisions void. Yeah, sure. I think I'm getting consensus that this one's okay. Proposition V, employment of a former council member. This proposal is to add Section 12.06 to the city charter, which would prohibit any former council member from accepting employment with the city for two years after the end of their last term. There's some considerations we put together on here. The commission considered both a one-year gap and a two-year gap. They ultimately decided to put a two-year gap in. And the reasoning for that was that it matches an ethics provision related to representing a company before the city. You have to wait two years after you're off council or no longer an employee. The change would avoid any kind of appearance of impropriety related to the hiring of a council member shortly after they leave council. However, it could also, in theory, prohibit the city from hiring the most qualified candidate if that candidate happened to be a former city council member. So, both those considerations probably need to be weighed together when you think about it.
I guess my question is for Brian. Brian, right now, if a council member, former council member were to apply for the city, would they have to go through the same process as every other person applying? And go through the same, let's say, hoops?
Yes.
Okay, that's... So, they would go before... It would get vetted. They would do a background check. They would look for qualifications. And it would follow the full process of somebody else, just somebody outside the city, somebody that hadn't served as a council member. They would have to go through the entire process as someone who had never been a council member. Just double checking. It's a double... I just need another yes clarification on it, please.
Yeah, sir, that's correct. They would have to go through the typical hiring process that we'd have for any other employee. That's correct.
We don't give any special favors for ex-council members, correct?
No, sir.
All right. That's what I need to know. Thank you, Brian.
I don't... I'm not in favor of this change, and I actually think it should be zero years.
I agree.
I think it should be zero days.
Zero days. Thank you for being more clear on that one.
Once you're off council, you're a regular citizen, just like anybody else, and you have a right to apply for a job. I think it's...
I can attest to being off of council, being a regular citizen. You definitely have that feeling once you're off the dais.
What was the overall reasoning for this from the committee? I mean, obviously, it's to avoid the appearance of impropriety. Did they have... Did they demonstrate any examples of why they want to limit a council member from applying for the city for two years? In other words, you're not allowed, you are not allowed to apply for any position after two years of being on city council?
I think their entire thought process was the appearance of impropriety, that perhaps the former council member might get special treatment, which the city manager has just said they would not. Or just that whether they got special treatment or not, it looks bad. It looks like they got special treatment. So, that creates the appearance that something bad happened.
So, it looks political and personal on that end.
Right. And I don't think they really discussed the idea that that could lead to not being able to hire the most qualified candidate for positions, which I thought was a conflicting consideration.
I would make the argument that now you're an employee, so you don't have the same leverage as you did as a council member. So, you actually, if you were to do this transition, you actually now are an employee. So, you... It would be a hard change for a council member to go to an employee because now you're an employee. Now, you're being told what to do when you're used to telling people what to do. So, it's your one and only employee, right? Now, that one and only employee is now your boss. So, I just don't see a lot of council members wanting to do that. And... But if it does happen, I mean, I got to make sure they go through the right vetting process. They're going through the hiring process, just like anybody else. And they're following all the steps, and the city is doing it correctly. And as long as they're doing that, I'm okay with them applying.
I understand from this point, you know, up here, saying, you know, because, let's say, in due time, when I retire from my career, if I want to work for the county or if I want to go and apply at another city or something like, or here, you know, who's to say that, you know, well, this person was hired because he's a former council member and now he's working in our department? I can understand. I could see where, on an internal level, where there'd be some animosity going there because some people may be feeling that way. But as far as allowing somebody to be able to gain employment, that's how I'm looking at it in that sense, not looking at it. Of course, you're gonna go with the best person that's going to be qualified. But it's... I'm kind of on the fence on it because, again, you know, I want to be very lateral about this. I want to be respectful to what the charter committee was looking at because that is a big conflict in this city. There's always this controversy from day one since, you know, favoritism towards council members in different angles and stuff like that. And that's just the nature of the business in this city with residents. But I'm just kind of looking at it in the sense of how this was brought forward and getting an understanding and examples from the committee on why they would... The reasoning for wanting to make a recommendation of, after your term is over, you are not allowed to apply for a city position for up to two years.
I feel like I'm gonna get a consensus to not push this one forward, so I'm gonna move on to the next one.
So, just to confirm, currently, it is zero days?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, just to jump in on, I think that, you know, I have to agree with the commission, the committee that reviewed this. I'm always very careful about what might appear, like an appearance of impropriety because you start walking, you could walk into that area. I think that, you know, you do have to be careful of, because we approve multimillion-dollar projects here. Positions get created in the budget. So, we have to be careful that that's not just being designed for someone leaving their term of office. So, just to be on the safe side, it does match the recommendation of, what is this? A city employee or officer representing others? Is that...
Right. The ethics provision limits your ability to represent someone adverse to the city. So, in front of the city as opposed...
Right.
So, I think the consideration was that it should be the same because if I'm a city employee, I'm considered, like, conflicted for favor of the city for two years. But at the same time, when you look at a council member coming off and then working for the city, they were serving the city and they're continuing to serve the city versus they're acting adverse to the city. So, there are good arguments, I think, on both sides.
Right. Yeah. And I mean, like, I know, like, there's like non-compete clauses in private industry. Like, I can't leave my job and go work for a competitor with, for a year. You know, that's so that the competitor doesn't draw me.
But that's not what this is.
But I kind of sort of see how we function as councils. We did our time, and then we should have that buffer period, you know, so that there was no advantages, you know, created as a council member.
So, on this end, should we look at, instead of two, going with one? But then again, this will be in the charter.
I'm not in favor of any change here. And I think that if we just had the real conversation as to probably why this is here, the conversation might be going a little bit differently. This is... We're... Let's not make fear-based decisions because there are some people who wanted to cry foul on something. There was no evidence of anything foul that took place.
And I feel like our police department is in a better situation, and we have a better police department for that particular council member having that position.
And if Councilmember Tobias decides to retire this year and go to work for the city and corrections, I would not, or in a law enforcement position, I would want to have the option. I would like for our staff to have the option.
I feel like if only it was three and...
As long as he followed the process, went through the entire vetting process, and it was an equal playing field, and that's what we're doing right now as a city. and it was an equal playing field, and that's what we're doing right now as a city, it's an equal playing field. You have to apply, you have to do a background, you have to do everything, and it's gonna be the best candidate that's gonna be selected. So I, I have, have all the confidence that we're already doing that, so I'm, I'm, I'm good with this. And, look, honestly, what y'all do, what we're doing up here on this council is, is, is a role of service, right? We don't make a lot of money doing what we do up here. It's more, it's, it's a labor of service you want to give to your committee. And if you're limiting now, you're almost punishing council members for serving. I mean, it's, it's kind of how I look at it. You're punishing council members for saying yes, that they want to serve their community, and now you're gonna be punished.
So for the record, that's, we were just using me as an example, that's all. Not saying that that's, that was not, that's not exactly my plan, but I understand what we're getting at, yes, and so...
Yeah, and, and for the record, we did not have a policy when, when that occurred, not that any, anything wrong or not the best candidate was chosen, but now that this has been as a recommendation, I'm okay with one year. You know, two years is, is a little too much, but one year I would be better off with.
I don't want it at all.
So you would rather have us have the second-best applicant?
You don't know if we're gonna get the second-best applicant. We could get the best applicant from any, any other, anybody's free to apply.
No, I know, but he's, I think what he's driving at here is, there's, there's no real baseline of this being an issue.
I don't want all of us to have a job with the city right after we stop serving. I don't want to see that. I think that, that, that is just not the way, you know, that, that we have trust in, in, in our, in our city, and in our community.
So you, your, your goal, your, what you're saying is you want to punish a council member for giving of his time and not being able to apply, is what you're saying?
No one's punishing anybody, but I don't think that you should have a job.
No, it's punishing a council member for wanting to serve. And I'm not saying I'm gonna take a job with the city, I'm never gonna take a job with the city, but still, as a council member, or future council members, if we have a council member that's qualified to come and fill a role later after he leaves a dais, I, I mean, I don't want to punish him for giving of his time to a city. It's, it's like a punishment.
It's, it's not a punishment, it's just, there's, there's a...
It is a punishment, because you served your city.
But, Robert, it's a one-year period, that, that's all I'm saying, is one-year period.
It's due a punishment, it could be three days, it's a punishment.
I, I think you're, Robert, if you don't mind interrupting, I think you were, you're using, you're using the word punishment in, in, in a very strong sense, and, and it's not, I don't think we're trying to punish anybody. I think what the commission was, was maybe doing, and maybe the, the, the language is not written correctly, or written, written a different way. If I was to write that, I would say be considered, the commission is to require a one or one-year limitation or two-year limitation of a former council member for applying within the city. Because, you know, Councilman Zuniga made a good point, there are companies out there stating that after you leave a company, you, they say that there is a one-year, or even with county employees, if they, once they retire and they want to come back, they've gotta wait, I think, six months or ninety days before they can apply for a position again, with, within a department, or for any other city. I don't know how the city works, like, once you retire here, but you want to come back and, you know, for a new position.
And those are, those are jobs.
Yes, I understand, but...
What we're doing is a role of volunteerism. We're volunteering.
We're elected officials, yes, we're elected officials.
Yeah, and where do, where do we draw that line? Are we gonna do the same thing with our boards and commission? What if we have a board and commissioner that's really good at being a good commissioner, but then goes off of commission? Are we now gonna say they've got the upper hand, too, for volunteering and knowing the insides of the city? I mean, where do we draw that line? When do we stop punishing people for wanting to serve? That's what I want to say.
Well, I want to, I would like to jump in here, just so we can get some clarification on how we handle situations like this, because it seems like there are four of us who are pretty firm on zero, and there are two, and I'm not trying to end debate here, we can continue talking about this, but I would just like some clarification around what you need, it needs to be unanimous for it to move forward. Is that accurate?
I'm reading four that don't want to move forward, I would recommend moving on.
Can we, because I feel like we've been talking about this for a while. Can we, can each of you just, you guys go one more time, you can take one more whack at us, and...
Right, last thing, it's like, if, if I serve on council, but I'm a good businessman, and I have a business, I can't get contracts with the city while I'm serving. So when you, when you define punishment, that is punishment, right? So it's the same, it's sort of like the same scenario, Robert, one, you know, you shouldn't serve.
So, so Miguel, we're, we cannot go out and work for a company after we leave council for two years. That's, that's, that's already in the charter.
But like Tobias said, it's like a double dipping.
But, no, no, it's not, because you're now lo, no longer a council member, you're now going into another role of service for the city, but you're qualified for it. You have to be qualified for it. You can't just grab that job, you have to go through a vetting process.
You get confidential information from the inside that not all the public will have on the outside. So if that position is open to you, you had proprietary or confidential information not easily accessible to others on the outside. So that's, that's just my, you know, opinion of it. It may not be the right way, but what I'm saying is just to have a safeguard, a one-year period, to me, is, is a reasonable safeguard.
Look, I, I, the, I haven't necessarily been on board with the use of the term punishment until now, because what you're saying then is that you are, you want to, you would rather discredit experience gained during the time of service for a certain amount of time, that because you received it, it's through an act of service, that that is less valid and should not be something that you are able to use in able to, in order to obtain employment.
Experience is great, but you have a year, it's a no, there's no punishment in that.
No, I'm just speaking specifically to the experience.
There's no guarantee that job you're looking for is available after a year. If after somebody leaves council and a position opens up four months later, that they're ideally suited for, and nobody in the area is better suited for that position, the city will be better overall if they are in that position. You don't want to allow them to do that.
If you have that experience and you're that qualified, you, it's not gonna be hard to get picked up anywhere.
But it all goes back to where they may not hire you. You, just because you're, just because it says here on employment, doesn't mean any council member's gonna get the job. The point I was making, guys, is that it's a requirement after one year after service, a requirement that if there is a position after one year that you're interested in, that you can apply. That's it. You can apply. It's not saying that you're gonna get the job. It's saying that it's giving you the opportunity to apply within one year of, of that, and a lot of companies do that.
Look, if, if we are, if we are all in acknowledgement that we have a fair and transparent hiring process, then this change, in my mind, is, is doing something based on fear of the absolute unknown, and something that we have no evidence has been a problem in our city, so...
And council member made a great, Councilman Tobias made a great statement right now, where he says, there's no guarantee you're gonna get hired. I mean, you might not be the best qualified candidate, and I guarantee you, the boards that do the hiring aren't gonna put somebody in there that's not qualified, because at the end of the day, that falls back on the city manager. The city man, if the job of the city's not getting done, because we have people in positions that aren't qualified, we're gonna probably make a change at the city manager's position. So I think there's, there, you've got to remember, these jobs are not guaranteed, just because you're a council member, you still have to apply, yeah, so...
That, that's all I'm stating, guys. That's all I'm saying, is a requirement to apply, you know, one year, just go that. And, and if the majority of council disagrees with me, then, then that's the majority rules.
Yeah, Robert, it, it just looks bad, Robert. I mean, I, I'm sure you'd do great, you know, working for the city. I mean, you're, you're the guy for the job, I'll support you for it, but it just looks bad, and I have to say it looks bad. That's it.
Are we, has anyone changed their minds on this one? No, okay, so...
Moving on.
Okay.
Proposition W is on charter review. The commission is recommending an amendment to section 13.08. This would change the requirement for a charter review commission from every fifth year to every sixth year. This is similar to our planning commission issue. The charter requires that the city council review the charter every two years, and requires a charter review commission every five years. And again, those numbers don't really work together, so the idea here was to push that to six years. But it also, they're also adding language that would specifically allow the council to appoint an interim charter review commission if on one of the other times we're reviewing the charter, we see something that we think we want to get specific input on.
That's good.
I'm good with this one.
Apparently I named two of these W, which is actually 27. Brevity, this provision would remove long and wordy provisions and simply reference state law in a large number of sections. We have a lot of provisions that have really specific requirements. Some of those requirements are dated and may now not be in compliance with state law. I don't think that's technically an issue, because our charter says state law trumps in all situations, but at the same time, why do we have this long provision on how the processed annex property, when the state law keeps changing, when and if we can annex property in the first place? My suggestion for pretty much all of those is to remove that language and just reference the state law.
Would that go on the propositions?
It'd be a single proposition, listing all of these provisions to reference state law.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
Proposition Y...
Can I ask a quick question? Is there, is there any reason why things like this, long, wordy, specific requirements, that there's no actual difference in the, the interpretation, that we would put something like this and on a ballot to the voters, if there's literally zero change in the interpretation? It's just, you want to cut out words, or there's grammatical errors, or punctuation changes that need to take place, that we wouldn't have, like, with a supermajority, the ability to just make those changes? I feel like the reorganization of some of the...
So one option would be, we have a provision currently in our charter that lets us change a few things, but it's very limited. It's numbering, it's typos.
Okay.
It's very minor script notes, error sort of changes.
So this wouldn't fit that?
This wouldn't fit that, and this is just because, like, the argument that we have to follow these provisions that reference older law has now changed.
All right, that's fine.
To avoid it. Proposition Y is referencing a provision that was added relatively recently to authorize non-binding ballot propositions. The recommendation from the commission was just to lower the number of votes needed to put a non-binding proposition on the ballot from six to five. I think their thought process was that it's hard to get six votes on stuff, it might be, we might be able to get more, more propositions on for citizen opinion if we limit it to five instead of six votes.
This would have a low priority for me.
Okay. Kind of what I'm feeling across the board. Let's move on.
Yeah.
Proposition Z, the purpose of this one is to add some clarity around the language regarding the Texas Open Meetings Act. Our current practice is that all boards and commissions in the city follow the Texas Open Meetings Act, whether they are required to by law or not. And that is in our, in our charter, charter says they will all comply with the Texas Open Meetings Act. There's an argument that when we're saying they'll all comply with the Texas Open Meetings Act, if they're not technically subject to the Texas Open Meetings Act, and they don't comply with the regulations as if they were, they're still complying with the Texas Open Meetings Act, because they're not required to do those things. So the idea was to add some language that said that they would be held in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, even if not required by state law. Again, this might be a low priority item, but it was something we discussed.
Yeah, low priority, but also on the non-binding, I was actually okay with going to five, but it's low priority.
Okay. So next steps, I'm gonna go back and watch all of this and put together, recommended, ordinance calling the election and bring it back on August 5th. I do recommend we have a public hearing to go with that item, to allow the public to express any opinions they have on any of these items. Thank you.
I'm good with that.
Thank you, Amy. That was a lot.
All right, next up on the agenda is item two, consider directing the city manager to include an additional $25,000 in the property improvement program budget for fiscal year '24, '25. This was my item, is, you guys, I think most of us voted to approve this program last year, and maybe you weren't here yet, Mark, but this...
I was in the audience.
The, the spirit of this program is, is to help people make home improvements that are in desperate need of, of repair, and we have maxed out. There's a handful of projects that have already been completed, and I, I believe that we're gonna run through some pictures here. And, you know, the reason for the additional budget is we have, I believe, thirty-something additional applications that have yet to be reviewed, outside of just the, the basic qualifications, and, you know, it's, I kind of, I've, you know, we have people who have mold in their, their bathrooms, mold in their kids' rooms, holes in their, in their, in their flooring, you know, roof leaks, you know, and the majority of the people on this list are either disabled, a veteran, or over sixty. So I think that is, this is, at least for me, this is a priority that we try to, we try to fund a little bit more for the remainder of this fiscal year, because there are people who immediately could receive support from us in the city with a little bit extra budget. So is, if there's any questions, like, obviously there will be, so Melissa, do you mind stepping up? And, thank you. I mean, I could answer the questions, but I think that's not probably the best.
So these are, these are for property owners only?
Correct. This is for property owners, so this does not apply to, to people that are running their properties. So you have to own the home, you have to meet income eligibility requirements, and then also, yeah, so there's, there's standards. Austin Habitat for Humanity is our, our partner that's helped us with this program, so we budgeted three homes this year. Two of the homes, they actually matched what we granted, so they, they did 20,000 worth of repairs in, in two out of the three homes that we've had, and the city put in 10,000 for each of those, those homes.
Councilmember Tobias.
Okay. I'm glad we have this program. Do you, do you know rough about how many applicants applied this past year? So we have an item as far as...
I don't know for, for sure. I, I will say, Austin Habitat for Humanity had kind of a running list already for the Hays County area. They really kind of linked it down to, to eligible potential properties, and Kyle, they do say that they have thirty-three still on the, on the list that would have expressed or, or wanted some repairs. So they just kind of, again, it was a pilot program this year. We did three homes. There's absolutely a need in our area, and they are willing to continue to be partners with us on this, if, if we're wanting to continue the, the program.
So with the first year, we were only able to do three homes?
This is, yes, this year.
Okay, so three homes this past year. And then also, was, does the housing authority be able to assist with this, or was this something that they would have been able to help out with the program as well? And then the last question is, what will be, what's gonna be our budget amount for this upcoming year for this program?
Well, I'll take a shot at those. So first of all, the housing authority is, that owns properties, and their, their mission is to try to improve those properties and take care of those. They really don't have a program like this. The budget currently is $25,000. I think Mr. Heiser's request is to take it to 50, and the proposed budget that I submitted to you just last week, earlier this week, that you'll be discussing on Saturday, I'm recommending taking that budget from 25 to $50,000 on October 1. So that's what the budget is going forward, and I think you had a third question.
Yeah, well, yeah, the third one would be that if we decide to add additional $25,000 today, we would have to do a budget amendment with our general fund, correct?
No, sir, I, we, we have existing appropriations. We don't budget by program for amendments, so we have an existing appropriation that I think we can find that $25,000 in the current budget, if you want to spend it on this program. If that's the request that you have, for us to then open it up for hopefully another three or four properties, we could take a look and see how far those dollars could go.
So we have 25,000, which we had, if we add 25 now, and then you're gonna add 50,000, so this would actually go from a $25,000 project to maybe 100,000?
No, sorry, it'd be going from 25 to 50, and then going forward, starting next year and each fiscal year after, my proposal is to make that 50,000 each year.
Okay.
So just 50, if you do this proposal, it'd be 50,000 this year and 50,000 next year.
Okay, but you're already bringing an additional 25 in October, correct?
Yeah, I'm recommending it, yes, sir.
So that's, that's kind of where I'm at, as far as, are we adding additional 25,000 to the 50,000 that's coming in October? So that's kind of where I'm at as far as, are we adding additional twenty-five thousand to the fifty thousand that's coming in October?
No, I mean, at least how I, the spirit of what the ask is here is that we have a long waiting list of applications that could be serviced immediately before that new budget year starts. So we, there are people in need that we could be helping with this twenty-five thousand dollars. And then when the new budget year starts, that would, that budget would be fifty. Because, you know, the hope would be we could spend the twenty-five or I'm asking for now on the, some of the projects that are on the waiting list.
Okay, so with the twenty-five thousand, and the reason why I'm asking, Mayor Protemus, so that way, if we have thirty-three applicants waiting and we've only been able to service three homes, is there going to be, is each house required to have a specific budget amount? Let's say the roof was, each house is going to get maybe five thousand dollars apiece or maybe two thousand. But your immediate cost for the plumbing, which you were approved for, is going to run you eighty-five hundred because you got to, and Robert knows this already, you got to run ground, you got to break up the concrete, you know, you got to hire an inspector and all that. Those fees add up, so I'm just wondering how that would work into play.
Great, great question. Our current partnership with Habitat is really to spend ten thousand on each home. And that's what we've done. They would prefer, honestly, if we would be willing to contribute twenty thousand. It's, as you know, home repairs and stuff, it adds up quickly. So they don't really want to get into or start repairing a home if it needs less than ten thousand. So that's kind of the threshold that they've talked to us about. They actually matched our contribution in two of these three homes to really repair up to twenty thousand in some of these homes as well. So you're right, when you're looking at wheelchair accessibility for these bathrooms, you know, repairing flooring, it adds up quickly. So that's really kind of the threshold that they've looked at.
So part of the application process is to see how much of their home insurance can cover? And then we assist from there?
Yep.
Okay, that's good.
So just real quick, when we started this, I was kind of under the understanding, say, somebody had a small electrical repair that was keeping them from, you know, getting serviced or if they had a water leak that, you know, that needed attention. I'm just kind of worried about us getting too deep in this. I'm okay with adding to the budget. I'm just worried about spending too much per home. And that's, I guess that's where I'm at. Taking up twenty-something, I won't do. I was thinking this were going to be repairs that we could afford to help somebody get past that hump, right? That like, say, they've got a water leak, so the city came in and cut their water because they need a repair on the line. We get that line repaired, we're going. I just didn't know where we were going to go. This is extensive into a repair, a full ten thousand dollars per home. So, and I'm okay with tackling more houses, just not, the dollar amount seems a little high to me, I guess. I was thinking we'd go in and do some small jobs and be able to help more people. I guess that's what my hope was.
Is.
Can I just, Robert, I agree with you. You know, when I look the math and you look at the numbers, you have a twenty-five thousand dollar budget and you touch three homes. That's only three residents that you helped out. So I really thought there is going to be smaller increments here. And as you said, in essential needs, like a stove is broken, right? So they need that five hundred dollar stove. That's where I thought the pocket would be. Not that the program is a bad program to have, it's just how do we stretch the money just so that it touches more immediately needed? Not that these are not needed, but essential.
Yeah, great question. I think the city is always continuing to look at partnerships that we can. I think when you're looking at truly doing home repair and helping people stay in their homes, sadly, when you look at the list of eligible wants and needs, they quickly add up to ten, twenty thousand and more. So like for the first home, I mean, windows were broken, shower was broken, quite a few things. It's really hard to get into a home and do five hundred dollar repairs when there's that much need in that structure to make it kind of safe and habitable for the resident that was living there. And that seems to be the case with the two out of the three homes that we really repaired.
And I want to stress that it's important that we're taking care of our elderly community first and then we're taking care of those disability as well. So just not somebody that doesn't meet those requirements. We are sticking to the requirements, correct?
Absolutely, yes. So all of these three homes met the income eligibility requirements that were set. And two of the three homes that were repaired under this year were over the age of sixty as well.
I've got kind of a two-part question. Do we, do we know what kind of work is expected to be done on these other thirty-three applications? And do we know if the prioritization of the three that were done? Is it, was that because maybe they demanded a little bit more work than the others? Would it be fair to say that they all need about the same level of work?
No. I think honestly, some of them are all over the place. I think when talking to Habitat, they would say, if they were running the program on their own and we didn't kind of set those limits, they would say, it's really hard to get in and out of a home less than twenty thousand. Like, it's really hard to get, to meet some of the needs that applicants are representing with some of the deferred maintenance and/or issues for mobility that's required on that. We really kind of set that pilot program limit. And that's partly why they, I think they matched some of our monetary amounts on two of the three homes.
And if it's Habitat, are they going in and doing the repairs with volunteers and the donated material? Or are they going in and purchasing and hiring a contractor?
From the invoices I've seen, it's mainly contractors, registered contractors that they've been using. You know, for example, the air conditioning they did on one of the residents, it was a registered contractor for that.
I guess the other thing that, sorry, Mark, no, you're done. Go ahead, yeah. We already have the program and then we increased the budget for it to fifty. But I also look at all the other programs we have and there's a lot of need, right? It's just, it's not just not the only program with needs. We got the women's shelter, animal shelter, homeless shelter, food bank. I mean, it's just like, where do we have the, where will we look at caps moving forward? The need's not going to stop and the costs don't stop. So, you know, is it our function to, you know, keep building? We want to help as much as we can, but we're targeting one. What about the others?
I've always said that one of our primary jobs is to take the finite amount of resources that we have available.
You told me that one time. I heard you.
And apply it to the best of our ability to offset an infinite amount of need.
Right.
Well, there's not enough money in the world to solve all the problems. We just have to do the best we can to solve the most we can with what we've got.
Right.
I would say just to the point you were trying to make, comparing this to the women's shelter, the food bank, this solely serves residents of Kyle. The donations or the service agreements that the city has with various organizations go to the organizations. It's not, we're not restricting our money to only residents of Kyle. Like, this is a direct benefit to people who are in need. And, you know, in the grand scheme of things, like, I, this is.
Well, I asked you this, would you be willing to move money from a project that has a lot of money to where these other programs with needs would benefit from?
Look.
Because I can find money in sports flicks, Mr. Heiser. And it's a valid, it's a valid point for me to bring up.
If you want to have a discussion for the.
It's a valid point for me to bring up.
Hold on, hold on, guys. Order.
For the moving of a tree.
What I'd like to say, though, is if you want to have that discussion for the upcoming budget year and the process or where the funds come from, we can have that discussion.
Right, I mean, that's what breaks my heart, is that we can move a tree for two million dollars and we are here nitpicking twenty-five thousand dollars in real need, people with real needs.
But you.
We're not nitpicking twenty-five thousand. We're saying, we're just trying to see where our dollars, can the twenty-five thousand can be stretched a little better? Or, you know, we're also making sure that we're vetting and we're getting the right vetting thing. We're not saying we're not going to increase to twenty-five thousand. What we're saying, we just want some answers and some clarification on where the dollars are going. But we're not saying no to the twenty-five thousand increase. I don't think we are. I know I'm not.
What I'm saying is we can make better financial decisions, right?
Brian, is there any sort of material? Like, what I'd like to propose is, because you guys seem to have questions, and that's fine, of like the process and how this all works and that I have no issue with that whatsoever. I would, ideally, I'd like to try to pass this as is and request that Brian circulate all of the policy-related information. So when we have budget discussions on Saturday, if this is something that you guys would like to ask more questions about and try to refine process as part of a budget discussion and whether or not the fund should be allocated, I'm perfectly fine with that. If we can learn from the past and try to get better in the future and how money is being allocated, then, you know, that sounds, we should be learning as we go. You know, the intention here was to service some of the, like, you know, some of the needs that people have now. And again, like, they are, the people who are submitting for the most part, the overwhelming majority are our most vulnerable population in our town. And I know that no one is disagreeing that that is not important. I would just, I would ask that if we can, we can take a vote on this amount of money, I'm more than happy to have a further discussion on what that policy looks like. Councilmember Tobias.
Thank you. Again, sports flicks, women's shelter, playoff subject, we're talking about this right now. And the only thing that, again, and I think we all are in agreement, right now, we have thirty applicants that are needing repairs in their house. If this is approved for additional twenty-five thousand, my question would be, how would we be able to differentiate, divide more of the funding for those applicants? Or even if it's not all thirty, but let's say instead of the three houses, are we going to be able to service at least five or are we be able to at least seven? And I guess going back to Councilman McKinney's point, the houses that need the most priority, if it's a smaller item, let's, electrical or wiring or something to where we could be able to funnel that money there and we could service more, stretching out our dollar as much as I can until our new budget comes around. And then we can look at the, look at the policy and say, okay, we're going to need a, this is our pilot program. Now we're going to condense it down, you know, and we're going to require specific contractors moving forward because, again, contractors are in the money for profit. So we have to kind of look at that gap there, too. It would be a matter of, if we were able to vote for this for the additional funding, how many more houses can we be able to assist by the time October comes?
So let me try to help answer some of those questions. So I think the answer was three so far that we've helped with this additional funding. Three to five probably would be the estimate of what that might be for the rest of this year. And then if the fifty thousand is approved for the next year's budget, then you're talking about taking that from six to eight or nine homes that you would have for the next year as well. So all of that back, what I would call backlog of cases, the thirty-something homes that are out there, you won't be able to do it in one year. It may take several years to work through, but hopefully with a sustainable budget and a good program, and we can certainly talk about the parameters and how it's set up. But over a three, four, five-year period, hopefully you can work through those homes going forward. This was a pilot program when we set it up. It was, we talked about it with the council. We weren't really sure what the demand was. We were, you know, at the time, we were thinking we would have this dollar sitting out there and there wouldn't really be enough applications out there. So now we're actually seeing there's more than we thought. So it's just how to use those dollars the best way. We can come back perhaps with some other options about, instead of being ten thousand, maybe it's eight thousand, maybe it's six thousand something. But it's, I think to Melissa's point, you do, it's typically not just one thing. It's multiple things in these homes that are wrong and multiple issues, and they do get costly. So hopefully that answers the question, Councilmember Tobias. It's just, it's a little difficult for us to say with the exact precision what it would be. But maybe that gives you some numbers to kind of think about as you consider this.
I will say, are insurance claims denied? Because, I mean, it's, a roof damage should be at least insured if you have a mortgage.
Correct. So that is one of the questions that Habitat asks to, you know, on insurance as well. So, yes, I think they can help the homeowners, you know, potentially even do some insurance claims in addition to other repairs that are covered by insurance.
I'd like to see us help them with their deductible and if that's what the barrier is, and then have the insurance kick it in.
Could I make a comment?
Councilmember Harris.
For some of these programs. I understand we're talking about fixed income.
Councilmember Harris.
Most of these homes are not mortgaged. And I seriously doubt that they have insurance. These are people who do not have that kind of income. So, you know, I don't think that that's an issue at all. I think the issue for us is, do we just need to help them get moved to a different property sometimes? That sometimes these houses are in such a state of disrepair that the amount of work that we can do cannot bring them up to code.
No, and I totally understand. I mean, I've lived the hard life, so, I mean, I know what it is, right? I mean, to have a home you need to fix up, so. It's not, not saying that they're not, we don't need the help, we do need the help.
I'm just saying they probably don't have a mortgage and they probably don't have insurance.
So, so some of the things to think about, there was just a study that a lot more homes are being uninsured because the insurance rates are so high. There's more and more Texans without home insurance, and that's something to keep in mind as well. But one of the things, I think what we're doing, I think we're all in agreement. We want to see the program expand because it's helping people. Well, I am with, we've got to be careful on how much we expand, but I'm okay with expanding this. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve twenty-five thousand dollars for the program.
Second. All right, motion to approve made by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, I'd like to see more information on this moving forward to the, before the budget. So just some more of the parameters on the program and so we can make a really good decision come here when budget season comes to an end.
All right.
I would like to learn more about these other thirty-three applications and what all they entail.
Certainly.
And thank you for sponsoring the item as well.
No problem. We all approve this, so this is a group effort. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes six-zero. All right, the city will now go into executive session to discuss agenda items three A through D pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one dot zero-seven-one and five-five-one dot zero-seven-two and five-five-one dot zero-eight-seven. All right, the time is ten-thirty-two. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There will no action be taken now. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.